Very important.
We are live.
That's funny. All right, we are live, all right.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday. January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of Annapolis County Commissioners to Order. Welcome all on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension, the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you. I'm going to ask you to join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, I'm going to call roll. Commissioner Steady?
I am present, sir.
And Commissioner Shea is present, we have a forum. Item number one, I did, item number two. Item number three is call for executive session, Commissioner, if you could read that.
We have executive session, oh. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd move the, uh, we go into executive session pursuant to national law thirty-eight, twenty-one, eighty-three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public party, and the chair so declares. So.
And we'll second add and mention that we will be returning for the remainder of the agenda.
And the chair so declares.
For the vote to go into executive session, Commissioner Steady?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shea is a yes. We're going to go into executive session, if we'll take the proper procedure, we will be returning.
I saw that.
All set?
Yeah.
We're back on the record at our regularly scheduled meeting.
Don't be doing.
Of Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Item number five, appointments, I have none. Item number six, I'm sorry, item number six is appointments, I have none. Item number seven is public comment.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to, excuse me, do you want to point out that item four and five were tabled? Where is on the agenda?
I do, I'm sorry, we, we. I, I'm sorry, I suppose I should take a motion to table.
I'll move that we table the minutes, uh, for the open session meeting, uh, at this time.
Of January third.
Right, yes.
Motion made in second in all favor, aye.
And Mr. Chairman, item five, I'll move that we table the minutes of executive session, January third as well.
Motion second, motion made in second in all favor, aye. It takes us to six, no appointment, seven, public comment. Each meeting we have, next session, item, agenda item for public comment, whether people are out in Zoom land, or they want to come in and talk to us. We're open for public comment, now is the time. Mr. Buckley, have you?
We have received none.
We have none?
That's correct.
Is there anyone out in Zoom land again? Has any public comment today? Last call for public comment. Okay, we have no public comment, that's number seven. Number eight, old business. Waiting for this county engineer, I know he's here. Today we'd like to, uh, wrap up the petitions to our discontinuance and a portion of Page Street, Page Street, located between Route twenty-four and the Stoughton Ave Montan line. This has been a request from the town of Stoughton, received probably earlier mid-ninth, in mid-twenty-three. All of the due diligence has been done, the county surveyor is here with us. We held the public hearing on December twenty-third. We received the last piece of correspondence we were waiting for, I believe, which is an ascension from the Avon Board of
Select Board.
Select Board. And I have received from Eric Beckerman, Chairman of the Board, on January fourth, twenty twenty-four, at a meeting of the Avon Select Board, has been voted that there are no objections to discontinue a portion of the eighteen-seventy-two county layout of Page Street that abuts the town line of with Avon. The town of Avon Select Board concur with the discontinuing of Page Street in Stoughton, Mass. Patrick, do we need anything else? You check with our legal counsel.
Yep, uh, they recommended, uh, the votes that have been, uh, they take votes as submitted.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Steady, I'm ready to go.
Yeah, I just want to see if we, um, can explain this a little bit, so I have two documents in front of me, I'm looking for clarification. One says vote. And I said that by this document, two zero three six. Another one seems to be almost the same thing, but doesn't say vote. Is that just for, uh, information?
That's the information, that's the backup information for that.
Now, is it necessary for me to read a motion of its entire, its three pages? Or?
You, you mean, read this five-page document?
Right.
I don't believe so, which one has the signature page on it? I would say the, uh, last page is all you need to read, but this is certainly available, you know. It's the one where our signature says, and in accordance with authority vested in us of the law.
I thought to us, for the record, I'll move that the Norfolk County Commissioners on this date, uh, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, to hereby approve uh, the petition of Joseph McRuskey and others in the Select Board of Stoughton in said county, uh, for the discontinuance of the county layout, uh, Page Street, as identified in, uh, a memorandum identified further as docket two zero three six, that describes the property, the meets and bounds, um, and so on, and so forth, and to take all the other actions noted in the memorandum, that again, as it references two oh three six. The Board will adopt, ratify, and confirm all actions eight to four taken by the Commissioners, uh, which is, uh, in conjunction with this motion. Uh, matters which are subject to foregoing votes. Unless I need to read each of the foregoing stipulations, through this voted, voted, voted. Do you want me to read those?
I don't think it's necessary.
Motion to failure to comply with any condition stated in this document shall cause to revoke or modify the vote set forth. And it says vote Commissioner Shea, or the Commissioners acting singly or together, hereby authorize the Director and name upon Norfolk County to execute, deliver, in such form as he or she may approve, any and all documents, agreements, and instruments necessary or desirable to consummate and effectuate the purpose of the actions contemplated in the foregoing votes. The execution and delivery thereof by such Commissioner to be conclusive evidence of such authority to prove. And finally, as a third vote, to adopt and ratify, confirm all actions eight to four taken by the Commissioners in connection with the matters which are subject of the foregoing votes. Make that a motion for that. That's sufficient.
On the motions, I'll second it, and if there's any further discussion, now's the time. I believe we're ready. Okay. Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
And before you leave, we have it in quadruple get for you to sign.
Okay, here's my, my. Motion, this is passed, I believe this is part one of the letter to follow, we just took in the last December meeting, twenty-seventh, we took another letter, another petition from town.
That's for the other side.
On the other side, but they have to be two separate actions anyway.
But this, this wraps up the one that was back in twenty twenty-two, right? I believe, started, more or less.
So per the list of, that you just approved?
Right.
Those ten items need to be finished. So the, uh, the grants have to be signed by the butter, and grant the assignable easements. And then the, uh, the town has to accept the grants from the butter. And then the, uh, the accessway has already been built with the bar way, so that's already done by the butter. And then everything has to come back to you with, with that other document that you had, and we'll have the return, that's the return order. It'll come at a later date, and you'll.
Look at this is.
And you vote that, and that'll finalize it, and everything will get recorded, and then it'll be final.
Then they can. Oh, we're almost there.
Yeah.
Not quite there yet. Put the ball now with back in Stoughton, right? Back to Stoughton.
Shortly.
So, love fifteen.
Yes.
Thirty. All right, and then the other Page Street, Mr. Chairman, that was just, we got a letter requesting that. That came in like, I think around the time of our Norfolk County Advisory Board meeting. It was late. They was handed to us, but that's a little way to go on that. Okay, all right.
It's at the beginning.
Sorry, that concludes the matter, and it's open for this today, but it's in further, we'll do the rest as it comes to us.
Right, thank you. Thank you for your work on that.
Great.
And everybody, your staff included, of course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick.
All right, Patrick, enjoy that, uh, other thing there, take care.
Very personal matters for consideration, we have one for school and one.
Yes.
In the county effort.
Mr. Chairman, uh, move, uh, for the approval of the Norris resignation at Annapolis County Air Cultural School of Kathleen Sumelstar of Norwood as the girls JV volleyball coach. It's a great program, for the rate stated and the effective date, one-ten-twenty-four, so.
I'm second in all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
If you're going on to become a coach.
We're looking for girls. Girls, we're looking for girls.
They got a great program.
Volleyball coach.
All right, Norfolk County, Mr. Chairman, I just make notice of return of, uh, family leave, FM LA Leave Effective one sixteen twenty-four, so.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Payroll expense warrants for approval.
All right, Mr. Chairman, move the following, we'll have three, from the warrant list of one seventeen twenty-four. First, number one, uh, twenty-four dash twenty-eight, I move approval of the payroll of the county, the amount one hundred fifty thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars, fifty-seven cents, so moved.
Motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second, I move approval for the expense of the county, oh-three dash twenty-four, the sum of ninety-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars, eleven cents, so moved.
I'll second it in all favor, aye, it is a vote, next.
Third, I move approval of the expense for the school, uh, twenty-four dash oh-seven A, in the amount one hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars, sixty-five cents, so moved.
I'll second it in all favor, aye, it is a vote.
No payroll for this one? Okay.
That's all we have.
All right, that moves that.
That concludes payroll and expense for us. Number ten. American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, do we have any?
Three, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll beg for game report. From the micro to the macro, uh, in a, at a micro level, as we're seeing, and we anticipate will only continue it through our last year of the SCRAM. Uh, I am happy to report publicly that the town Brookline has moved from their large, about half of their award, five-point-five million dollar award for premium pay, has moved to level two, we anticipate it quickly moving to level three, we're already beginning to take steps to do a presentation with them, including, of course, the Chair, the Advisor Board of the Brookline, Representative Dr. Childs, as well as, uh, our partners in the state legislative delegation in there, Select Board, hopefully, at the end of this month, at the beginning of next. It seems to be moving quickly now. After much discussion, uh, which is, which is great. Franklin also has a pretty significant water and sewer project that just made it to level three this morning. Uh, I would anticipate that to be before you to next week. That just about does it for Franklin as well, so that's the last piece we're looking for there, we've, we've had significant discussions with Medfield over a couple of their, uh, their applications, what we're seeing, uh, to the, to the macro now, as this is our last full year that we can appropriate these funds and to obligate them and inconformly to the Directive of the Commission, which is to give us little money back to Uncle Sam as soon as possible. What we're finding now is that as communities begin to spend down, Norfolk County continues to leave, we have the largest, uh, number of grants distributed, the largest number of applications, the largest number of applications approved, uh, the most communities to have received something, Brookline will make it, all of them. Uh, a- as we continue to, to move towards the end, communities with smaller and smaller amounts require more and more dialogue with us to inventively make sure that they can utilize all of their awards, we're also seeing in a couple of communities as they proactively look over their projects and really push to get as much expended as possible, we're seeing, uh, other communities work with us about giving some money back as projects do not utilize the full amount, so that they can quickly reobligate that, we're, we're pushing, obviously, in a very strong way, reimbursement, because reimbursement for, for things that are, that are eligible and already, that have already been expended. Uh, there is no room for, uh, the possibility of having unspent funds, so we're, we're urging people to go in that direction, especially as, as we move into a new phase. And on that macro level of, of shifting into this last year, working with Bill Galvin and others, we're having individual spot conversations with communities, but on Monday, we will have a full, uh, workshop on Zoom, as we had done at the beginning of this process, to really go over troubleshoot and, uh, be available for questions relative to Director Cronin's memo, which I believe you received in your packets last week, the close-up memo where we're asking communities to tell us what you're doing and to, uh, give us your plan, so that we can again, factor the largest amount of utilization possible for Norfolk County, we're seeing, um, as well, we're going back through our monitoring, our monitoring process and our quarterly reporting process to see who has received funds and to look at their expenditure funds and, and match that against what they projected they would expense, the, the, the clip with which they projected to the expenditure fund, some folks are ahead of the game, which is wonderful, uh, some folks are not, and so that is, again, triggering additional dialogues about how we can, number one, assist them, but also perhaps the need to, for a project that they thought would be done by now, yeah, and there are a number of communities that have a number of awards that they have yet to expend against, uh, that may trigger additional conversations of us to, to see, perhaps, them returning funds to the Commission for reallocation for something that can be expended more. So, uh, we're in the helping people business in this stage, and we're I, I anticipate, as, as the Director has telegraphed to you, that for the next, um, six to eight months, or really the next year, um, there'll be a lot more community dialogue, which is the Director of Regional Services. I like a lot because I think we're, we, we get them to talk about Appa, and then we're talking about something else, and the ways and measures comes up, and other, um, opportunities, so that's all good stuff, and I think, um, it's, the user experience is getting better and better, and, uh, the level of comfort with our subordinates, our communities, and, and our collaboration is only improving, so.
Thank you, any questions?
Yep, couple, so, thank you, Bill. That's good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, two things, Franklin, you said they put something in, it's moving on to water, what's the amount? Do you know roughly?
Uh, it's over a million. It's, it's about.
Let's make this way along, okay. Um, on the other matter, in terms of, um, you mentioned that, you know, almost all the towns now have with Brookline's application, every town has at least put something in?
That's correct.
You sure of that?
Yes.
We're not going to see anybody at all?
Nope.
All right.
Um, and about a dozen of them are done, completely.
Oh, yeah, some of them are great, no, 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 some of them, but the others have been kind of kind of distant, you know, so I know you're zooming, you're zooming in on them, um, okay. All right, that's a.
It's, to your point, I, I think.
It's fine, I mean.
They, they went, the communities went generally one of two ways, you had the sort of Michael Boynton model in Midway, who kicked it off with one project, one, um, one application, Stoughton.
So, boom.
Randolph.
Right.
Um, as well, Milis, Sharon, um, they, they went in that direction, and that is obviously from their perspective, been easier. And there are others like Milton Bellingham, who did many, many, many.
I've mentioned.
I mentioned as well.
Yeah.
Um, and, but with that, there, it just increases the, uh, potentiality of having some leftover, so Bellingham is one of the, was the first community to give us money back for that purpose, because they had twelve awards, they were all for smaller amounts of money. So, uh, those are the folks who are really focusing.
That's all I have, man. And then, thank you.
Number twelve, bid opening, it's one-thirty. Nancy is with us, we have a rebid printing in Annapolis County Registry of Deeds. Come on up, Nancy.
Well, we've seen one bid. Um, it was sent out to like six different vendors. From Printing Unlimited, who presently does a lot of our printing.
In Brookmass.
For Brookmass. They seem to have bid on every item, and I'll look at the price differences, but as with everything else, awesome, gone up on every aspect of.
Refresh my memory, why were we rebids?
We got no bids the whole time.
Okay.
We didn't get any.
Very good.
We did not get a single bid last time. So, it was rebid.
Okay, motion to take the bid under consideration?
I do advise, right?
Under advise.
Right, yeah, I move, yeah, take the bid fee by.
Printing Unlimited.
Printing Unlimited, I do advise.
I'm second in all favor, aye, it is a vote. Hopefully, we can resolve this next week.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, see this over to the Registry of Deeds for their.
You won't have to, I mean, you have a lot of history here with both both spring we need to be done, plus the company, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, this concludes the
Thank you.
contract of bid openings for today, none. Okay. Number fourteen. Dated eleven thirty twenty-three. Commissioner, we have a November trial balance for approval.
Right.
There's some mirror.
Yeah, thank you. I actually, I had a little time this morning to, uh, review this, I had a couple of questions, they may just be
Go ahead.
pro forma, but again, try to struggle with this, I, I would, I would find it, I think I've mentioned this before, and if I haven't, I apologize. It would be really helpful if we had, like, if there was some way we could get the prior months even. I call them, it said prior months, and then this one. So we'd have a column comparing, because I don't really know, when I look at this, whether we've gone up or down, and if I'm missing something, then tell me. I mean, I look at the trial balance, and I say, that's great, we have seventy million, but then again, how's that look compared to last month? And then I, John will say, well, our receipts are down, registered receipts are down, and again, that's great, but actually, I should, I should look at this document. I hope, with hope, and have a trend, even if someone says to me, well, here's September, because this says dated eleven thirty, so I know it's in arrears, I understand. But if we had, like, say, give me September, October, November. You know, give me a three-month thing, so I can see where we're going. I don't get that from this, I just don't, I'd like to see if we could add that. Secondly, I have a concern for the Aggie School, because I'm looking at this, it says the Aggie General Funds are minus one-point-six million dollars. But what's that about? We hit a hole, I mean, what, what is it, did you see that? I was like, what does that mean? Is that because our receipts haven't caught up, as, in terms of the ledger book? In terms of, you know, the tuition, the credit? And so, I mean, are we, I thought we were.
Do you want me to answer that? Would you like me to answer the question?
If you feel, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just the timing of our tuition collection, yeah, we bill half of our out-of-county tuition in the first semester, which we've collected most of, but not all of, for instance, Boston hasn't paid us yet. We bill a second half in the spring, and we bill one hundred percent of our in-county tuition in the spring.
Okay.
Because, because the amounts are small, so we don't want to send them two bills.
It just, it jumped out, it jumped out, I was like, what's going on?
It's good, it's good that you're paying attention and asking that question, but if you talk to Joe, do you, or this is the normal cash flow of the school, is that we get into the negative at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
And then we get caught up by the end of the year.
That's why I'm glad you're here.
Tuitions.
All right, and the third point, Mr. Chairman, it's kind of deceiving, because the total balance really isn't a total balance. When I look at that total balance, we should take out Appa. Appa's not our money, it's the federal governance, so if we have Appa, let's say we have like, what, how much Appa do we left over? Forty million? No, I say it's thirty-six. To me, the adjusted balance should be, we're looking at really about forty million, our balance, what, thirty-six? You with me on that?
No, I'm sure you're saying.
There's no reflection of that, so again, it's a false, gives you like, look at, if people look at this, you go, wow, we have seventy million, no, we don't. I mean, some of that's Appa money, that's all, so stuff like I pick up on, yeah, I had twenty-six million, that's what it was, you're right. I saw that, so I'm trying to make something that's good, even a little better, and I'm not an accountant, but as a layperson looking at this, it would help me as a Commissioner just a lot to say, hey, you know, here's your information. I know the print's small, I did do it, I read it, I went very carefully with it, and again, if that's on there, I see year-to-date, see, I see a, a year-to-date, it's hard. It's so hard to read that. You know, it's a tough one. But something like that, on that year-to-date page?
Yeah.
We could have a couple of columns to break it out, it would just help, that's all.
I think, Mr. Chair, I, I know the Assistant Treasurer's on, this is a, a downstairs document, not one that we produce ourselves.
Oh, we don't, oh.
So, I mean.
Well, do we need to talk to Mike or Joe?
Dialogue with that.
Okay, all right.
The call here.
Okay. That'd be great, that'd be great, I mean, it's great, but it would be great information for me to say, hey, you know, he may know how we're doing, I don't. I look at that, and I go, what does that mean? You know, so you asked me to approve a trial balance, I'll approve it, but I'd like to know, what does that mean, and then again, the problem is, we're in arrears, this is from, this is like November. And that's the way it goes, I understand that, I get it, you know, but, um, it would just be, it was like a waste of proof.
And we'll have December next week.
Either you want to do, maybe interfere if it's too much to ask, maybe every three months do it, a quarterly thing, a breakdown, to show trends, how about that even? So if that's too much, because I don't want to put a, a fair burden on Joe or anybody, but if we did even like, uh, you know, say, October, November, December, three months, how'd we look? How are we looking?
I'm going to ask the Director to look into it.
You with me on that?
Yeah.
Where we go?
Get you an answer, don't disagree with him.
That's all. Other than that, I'll be very happy to move the approval
Okay.
of the trial balance presented. See what danger does it get to us time? Uh, move the trial balance of seventy million, nine-hundred-and-twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars, thirty-seven cents.
Motion second, motion made in second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye. We have approved the November trial balance as presented. Duly noted your questions.
Thank you so much. And thanks, John, that's all, so I figured, I thought that's what it was, the receipts weren't, you know, weren't coming in, but I wasn't sure, great. Okay.
Number sixteen, we're in, no, number fifteen, report to the County Director.
Yes, Chair, so a few things, obviously, Appa, uh, this year in particular is going to be a lot about what we're doing, um, I will note that on the agenda post outside, we did have a hold of them last week, which, uh, said the budget timeline, but obviously, you guys have dealt with that.
Oh, wait. Let me interrupt, let me, before I forget. So you're going to have a meeting, you said, Monday?
Monday, yes.
Who you have, that's not what I asked you, who you mean?
So it's, uh, that's a good question, um, we're meeting with the town managers and the town finance directors, so.
Uh, in case I want.
We can speak offline, I understand where your question is coming from.
I know, all right, all right.
We've taken steps. Uh, I think, um,
All right.
So, it, it, it really are, through, through our system, it's, it's a meeting with the, the certifiers and creators.
Okay.
Uh, we're getting a lot of, we have gotten a few really good probing questions now, people understand what we're trying to do, and again, these, this entire le- final year, the purpose of this is to, is to not have a sort of fire drill in October of this year, to say, oh, like, hey, whatever time, you have six million dollars left, what's your plan, and we want to make sure that, uh, people are Whatever town, you have six million dollars left, what's your plan, and we want to make sure that, uh, people are. Are given, are working hard to make sure that they can utilize all these funds, because as, as we know. It's almost impossible to move funds after January first, twenty twenty-five, for, for those last two years, so if. If a town, four, three, two months into twenty, uh, calendar twenty-five and twenty-six, finds that, oh, this project. Is not gonna work for us, there's no way to reallocate that, that stuff's going back to the feds, it's a two or three million dollar project. That's money that could be given to other communities, uh, especially, uh, the communities who did the large-scale. One-off single projects, many of them, you start going for a portion of that, I'm thinking Randolph, Randolph's sort of, uh. Water treatment facility is close to fifty million dollars, they, we're only paying for about a fifth of that, so. Um, we want to make, this, this is really all towards this, the singular goal of getting the maximum amount of, of utilization as, as. And we think as well. We're looking at the lessons from the state of cares, which we gave millions of dollars back to the, so.
Alright.
Really, uh, don't do that, so that, that's that meeting, um, again, hopefully on Friday and over the weekend at MMA, we'll have some. Preliminary conversations as well.
Right.
Uh, speaking of meetings, uh, the HR director will be doing a workshop on hiring best practices with department heads on the twenty-sixth. As we continue with the momentum of the new personnel handbook and. Making sure that the county is in conformity to all the best practices of personnel in the twenty-first century, uh, government sphere. Um, so again, shall be leading that with, um, Rina and her staff, uh, in about a week or so. As well, so, uh, that's on the horizon as far as, uh, meetings, other things to speak about are. Audit for FY twenty-two is projected to be completed by mid-February. Uh, we will then roll immediately into the FY twenty-three audit as well, as we continue our work of, of catching up to a regularized. Um, schedule, we're working well with Paus and Sullivan, so we'll be, uh, right on track there.
This is fiscal twenty-four, right? We're in for fiscal twenty-four.
It's gonna be about, it's about eighteen.
No, it's not bad, yeah, alright.
Um, so, so that's good, they've been a pleasure to work with so far, obviously, we have some experience with them in, um. Through ARPA, as well as their, uh, uh, no quantity in many of our considering communities. Finally, we did have a, we sat on a, a good meeting with Senator Markey's staff, Ben Thomas, who's, his regional director, who does CD. Eight and nine, led a longstanding professional relationship before I was here, and, um.
Yeah, Ben's good.
You know, they have. Much like, a- as we look at our capital needs in an overarching fashion. It's really, I think, from Director Cronin's perspective, an all-hands on deck approach, right, we were able to get a, a playground. Substantially funded through the state budget a couple of years ago, uh, through the work of Speaker Mariano and Bruce Sayers, as well, we're, we're now looking at the. Uh, federal appropriations budget with, uh, Senator Markey, I know, uh, Congressman Lynch has been. Very interested in finding a time in the next month or so to have a dialogue with us about overarching county capital needs as well. Granted, the, um. Budgetary and political situation at the federal level is even more volatile than it is here at the state and the local, um. But it is important, I think, to really try to chase all, all avenues, as we look to, uh, we, we know that our capital needs are gonna. Require a diversified approach, and so this is part of that diversified approach, so we had a good kind of introductory conversation. This goes on it as well, so.
Yeah, it's good, it's. That's what the John.
You gotta, you gotta ask.
It's just that, hey, if you don't ask, you don't know, it's a long way off, but you never know, it's good, it's good, it's good, maybe a little bit. I think too, though, what I'd said to him, he agreed, I think something like that, as far as the school goes. It should come out about strategic planning, that's.
That's correct.
The whole idea about strategic plan, you want to see that, the result of a plan, then say, hey, now, because of that, we need. You know, a new culinary area or a media center or cafeteria or whatever, but on our side, what are some of the things we could be getting on our side? I'm curious, did he say?
Um.
I already heard about the school, but what would the, uh.
We could.
What opportunities are there for?
I think you just, you look at our.
Oh, would it be the school?
Uh, obviously, schools are a large priority, uh, possibly the, uh, walls and recreational facilities.
Yeah.
Um, sort of the, the space up there, as, as you know, that it was formerly federal, uh, land and. The deed is requires it to continue to be used for recreation, so that, that parts of that facility are tired, and kind of to your point, that's how we ended up. Fixing the playground in, in the fashion we did, is because we knew it wasn't a huge priority, but it was, it was a project that was. In the queue as far as, oh, uh, the larger list of things we wanted to do with the, at the golf course, and then. With, with that funding, we were able to, uh, really fix that area or the facility that we really wouldn't have been able to otherwise, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we have a, you know, the conversation, any federal, anyway, I was with Congressman Lynch, I'd love to jump in on whatever. I know Stephen, you know, too, um. We gotta take the steps forward in the electric charging. This, in our parking lots, in our county buildings, at the Aggie school, that's an easy, there's gotta be funding for that, there's gotta be funding for that. Where we can get funding from them to, and input a couple of the registry, a couple of the. That's what we should be doing, there's a definite need for that, so.
I'm gonna put that on a future example.
Yeah, we keep, I keep saying it, and we keep saying it, and we're gonna do it, and then it kind of fades away, but I really would like to make that our goal for this year. Mister Chairman, twenty twenty-four, I want to get a couple and at least get, see something, you know, really see something done.
A lot of it, look, obviously, also deals with, uh. I don't think we want to be in the business of owning and operating them ourselves.
No.
That, that, so that goes back to the need to.
We want to make.
To sort of have.
But make it available.
Yeah.
We're service, we're servicing our, our clients, our customers, or whatever, when they go to the court, they can charge there, you know, something should be, it can't be. It is, it isn't, I know it's hard and it shouldn't be, but that, you talk about federal money, I know there's federal money out there, and that would be a great thing for them to work.
And the good thing to, um, because of our, the profession, also for professional relationships. Three commissions have, uh, as well as some of our staff who've overlapped with the federal delegation staff in the past, or together in other roles. Is there, they do a really good job, uh, Markey's office in particular in the Senate, and Lynch's office in particular in the House. When things come down to say, and we've been in the past looked at, um, specific appropriations bills to see. They'll come out with guidance and, and we'll kind of huddle and say, is there anything? Because oftentimes, these are very targeted, the, the congressional spending is quite targeted in its, um, area of. Purpose to say, okay, look, let's look at our large, um, list of, of capital needs, can we squeeze anything into the? And the same thing with, um, state bond bills as well, although, uh, state bond bills are about a fifth of the projects ever get funded. But if, if, as things move forward, if we think there's something, if they're doing a, uh. They haven't done agricultural bond bill in a while, um, but as, as, as that comes forward, luckily, we are lucky to have such strong. Working relationships so that our colleagues in those branches of government are telling, their staff is telling us, hey, if something comes down the pike, perhaps you can. You can snag a bit of this, and they're great at helping to. To polish those type of, but I think you, you're, the first point you made is the most important ones, the strongest. Case for funding can be made when you have a very strong and outlike capital plan, uh, that really, that has. Actions and, and with a lot of backgrounds, and that, it oftentimes, these. These opportunities come in with a week, two weeks to put a, um, an application together. So if you have a really robust capital plan with a lot of background, votes with a, a clear vision of what you're trying to accomplish. That makes the job of chasing these, these funding sources a lot easier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, and then reports of county director, that's all you have?
Mister Chairman, the governor's giving her report with the State of the Union, is it next week?
Tonight.
Thank you for your mind, we get that tonight.
It was tonight.
Yeah, could be interesting if she attends the other day.
Uh, generally.
He was here.
She gave the call.
Chris Paul was there, I wonder, I'm just curious, again, because of the announced cutbacks, there, there's gonna be an interesting, uh. See how it develops.
And, and I think, the, Mister Chairman, but that's the other side of, of seeking appropriations from other. Um, government agencies, as you know, although a, a large portion of those cuts were earmarks.
I know.
For projects, luckily, we better, uh, our playground last year, so that it, it didn't get hurt by that.
Alright.
It's, uh.
Sixteen emergency items and topics the chair did not recently anticipate. I do not have any. If anyone else has any.
No, nothing.
Now's the time, okay, number seventeen adjournments.
Mister Chairman, I'd be, uh, pleased to move to be adjourned at one fifty-nine.
One fifty-nine, all adjourned, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we are adjourned, we have a full meeting next week.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-fourth.